Just want to start this off as we usually do with a really quick introduction of the format of tonight's meeting before we turn this over to the Planning Commission Chair. As many folks know, you can participate in our virtual meetings here in Van Buren Township by going onto Zoom using the raise your hand chat or star nine function. The meeting is being held via Zoom tonight and also will be hosted on the Van Buren Township's cable and YouTube channels. We are holding this meeting remotely due to health concerns related to COVID-19. So tonight's agenda has a couple of new business items, no public hearing items on the agenda tonight, just a couple of new business items related to a single project called Project Sycamore, which you will hear about shortly. And then staff will have one or two updates at the end of the meeting as well. So with that said, I will turn this over to our Planning Commission Chair, Carol Thompson.
Thank you, Director Power. Welcome everyone to Charter Township of Van Buren Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, January 27th, 2021. We'll start with the roll call, please.
Jeff Jar.
Here.
Brian Cullen.
Here.
Brian Kelly.
Here.
Medina Atkinson.
Here.
Sherry Budd.
Here.
Joan Fransway.
Here.
Carol Thompson.
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Harmon. We have an agenda before us. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
All right, Commissioner Kelly, a support?
Support.
Commissioner Atkinson, thank you. Any changes or additions to the agenda? All in favor of approving the motion to approve the agenda, please? Oh, I'm sorry. Roll call vote.
Joan Fransway.
Here.
Jeff Jar.
Yes.
Brian Cullen. Brian Kelly.
Yes.
Medina Atkinson.
Yes.
Sherry Budd.
Yes.
Carol Thompson.
Yes. So the agenda is approved and will move to approval of the minutes from our regular meeting of January 13th of 2021. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Madam Chair, motion to approve is submitted.
Support.
But any changes or corrections to the minutes? All in favor, as we roll call, please say aye. Roll call vote, please.
Brian Kelly. Medina Atkinson.
Yes.
Sherry Budd.
Yes.
Brian Cullen. Jeff Jar.
Yes.
Joan Fransway.
Yes.
Carol Thompson.
Yes. All right, minutes are approved. We'll move directly into new business for tonight's meeting. Item number one is Project Sycamore, the final site plan approval and an extension approval. The applicant, Julian Beglin, is requesting an extension and an amendment to a previously approved final site plan approval for site development for a visitor and vehicle receiving center building, associated improvements and site hardening for security purposes for a data center use. The final site plan was initially approved on April 10th of 2019. The location of the property is 9,000 Hagerty Road. The property is on the northwest corner of Hagerty Road and Tyler Road. And we'll start first with a presentation by township staff and then we'll hear from the applicant. Director Power.
Thank you, Chair. I will go over this portion of the agenda pretty quickly. As you heard in the description of the project, this is a project that involves a data center use with site improvements and a vehicle receiving building. The project, as described just there, was originally reviewed and approved by the Planning Commission in 2019. There was also a variance request in 2019 that fed into the approval for this project because as you'll see in the plans, there is a 14-foot wall for security purposes, which given the eight-foot height limit on walls and fences in the zoning ordinance, there had to be a variance in place to allow that. The final site plan then came about after that variance request in March, in April of 2019. And the reason that I'm bringing all that up is just for some context and some perspective because the bones of this proposal are the same. This is still a project that involves a vehicle receiving center that's the same square footage or roughly the same square footage with the same general concept of the use and the same basic engineering behind it. So that is all to say that this is a project that is now being reviewed again. It's being reviewed as an amended project because certain aspects of the site plan certainly have changed, but it's not a project that is starting over from scratch. So as such, erring on the side of caution, knowing that there is a one-year expiration on site plan approvals, staff thought it was, I thought it was most appropriate to make sure the Planning Commission offered an opportunity to formally extend the effect of the original site plan approval. Based on that extension, the Planning Commission can then consider the amended site plan. So this first action on the agenda tonight is just to hear the applicant's reasons for the extension and actually you have that information in your packet and to feel free to ask questions about that, but otherwise I would strongly recommend that we offer the extension of the original approval from 2019 per section 12 of 207 of the zoning ordinance, which will allow us to, again, pick up on the project sort of where we left off and look at the amended plan. And so that's a brief description of that first agenda item.
Great, thanks, Director Powers. Is the applicant with us and does they have information to share at this time?
You see Mr. Beglin and Mr. Patrico representing the Project Sycamore group and I think you'll see that in the letter, there's some information about the value engineering that went into the timeline for their revisions to the project that took some extra time. And if Mr. Beglin, Mr. Patrico, or Mr. Kelly would like to speak to that briefly, feel free.
Mr. Kelly, I see your hands raised. You are unmuted.
I was just making the mic open. I don't see that control here. Mr. Beglin or Patrico would probably be more appropriate to start off.
Hello, this is Sal Patrico. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you, Mr. Patrico.
Yeah, thank you. So I believe the question was really just more the details surrounding why this project had its delays and more of a value engineering effort was put in. Do I understand that correctly?
Sure, that'd be great.
Okay, so I'll kind of start with the beginning. You know, we set out to do this project as one whole project and we started designing in 2018, began construction of phase one in the fall of 18. And subsequently, while we were doing that, one of the lines of business in our building wasn't able to relocate out of the space. And as you can imagine, a project of this magnitude, there's several challenges that are presented when working in an occupied building with power ups and shutdowns and things of that nature. So we were forced to delay the second phase of the project, which was, the main focus of that was the security of the facility. So there's a vehicle visitor registration center, which is meant to vet all visitors and shipments into the data center campus. And then there's a secondary security checkpoint once you get into the building, to which point you'll be released into a new admin area. And then if there's a need beyond that, you can be let into the more secure spaces. But you know, as part of our North American data center plan, we were, this site is actually a bunker site that serves as a backup between the other four sites in North America. So very, very crucial, very high security. And we actually had a threat analysis done, a blast threat analysis, which led us to make some of the improvements that we've asked for and the variance that we asked for for the 14-foot-high blast wall. There was a study done that basically looked at the effects of, you know, explosion of, I believe it was 500 pounds of TNT at the property line and what that blast wave would do to affect our critical system. So it was advised that we put these protections in place. And once we got to the timing where we could actually move forward with this project, the pricing had gone just through the roof, to be quite honest, the market pricing. So we took a look at some value engineering options to get ourselves the same form and function, just maybe a little different aesthetics and a little more economical aesthetics, we'll say. That being said, I think we did a really good job. We saved, we saved the budget. We got the project back on track and, you know, now we're back before you folks here to have you bless the changes that we've made. The changes, like I said, were less about the function of the site and more just more economical building methods, materials, shorter lead times and things of that nature. So all that being said, I think you'll find that the plans are very similar and, you know, Julian's on the line with us here. He's our engineer of record. If you have any questions or need any clarification on anything that we've done, more than happy to help there. Our goal here is to get back on track and get this project started finally after a couple of long years of hard work. So we're just excited to do that and, you know, happy to help answer any questions you may have.
Great, thank you. It's good to have that overview and the history of how we got to here. I think what we'll do is hear the recommendations from our planners and our engineers and then there may be questions or discussion after that. So stay with us. First, we'll go to McKennan Associates, please. Ms. Krishnan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I believe this first item that is before you is not for the amended site plan. What is before you right now is just granting an extension for a previously approved site plan. So I will go over my report in item number two. This item just requires a motion from the board to extend approval of the original site plan, which is expired.
Okay, that's great. Thanks for clarifying that for us. We'll put the engineering report off to the item number two as well. So I'll ask the commission, planning commissioners.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, I just saw in the chat that Julian is here and he was calling in on a phone. I have now unmuted him, so I think he wants to speak.
Great, Mr. Beglin, before we go any further, please share whatever you have with us.
No, I was just trying to make sure technically you could hear me before we get through to any other discussion.
Okay, great, yes, we can hear you fine. So if nothing to add.
Thanks.
Okay. Planning Commissioners, questions or comments on the topic for our first agenda item, which is only the extension of the existing approval?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Jar.
I am wondering how long of an extension the applicant is seeking.
I'll ask, I'll go to Director Powers on this. Actually, our ordinance lays out how long those site plans are in play until we have to consider an extension. Do you want to go over that for us, please, Dan?
Sir, the ordinance reads such that there's a one-year sunset on any final site plan approval with the opportunity for up to two additional years of extension by the Planning Commission. In this case, due to the process that was described by Mr. Patrico and the complications of last year with review processes for multiple projects just due to the remote workflow with COVID, we're comfortable being sort of retroactive on this, but saying that, you know, the effect of the original expiration rules would still apply. So my understanding is construction is imminent, but the ordinance reads such that they could ask for up to two consecutive one-year extensions beyond that first expiration. So perhaps the applicant can clarify more specifically, you know, maybe they'd be ready to start by April, April 10th of this year. That would be two years since the first approval and technically they could ask for one more unless I do see the principal planner has her hand raised, so she might have some other clarifications on that.
Yes, thank you, Director Power. Typically, a plan is considered expired only if building permits have not been applied for. The moment building permits are applied for, it is considered that the project is in motion and however long it takes to reach the finish line, the project is considered as in process. So to my understanding, this project Sycamore has applied for building permits, so they are actually already in the process. Granting this extension is just dotting the ice and crossing the T's in a fine manner, but the project is not expired and once the permits are approved, they are technically considered as in compliance with the ordinance as long as it takes for them to finish the project.
Great, good clarifications, both of you. Thanks. Commissioner Jar, that help? Anything else?
Well, I added a lot of clarification. I'd still like to know how long the applicant would like the extension for. Would three months be sufficient?
Oh. Gentlemen, anyone have a timeline projection for how you'll proceed?
Yeah, this is Sal Patrico. I can take that one. So we are in the process right now, excuse me, of writing Dennis Kelly and Turner a GMP contract for this, it's actually a change order for this extension of their scope. And the project schedule that's in that contract actually has a start date in late February of this year and it will roll forward right through 2021. And our anticipated project final completion date is May 19th of 2020.
Great, thank you so much. Sound good to you, Commissioner Jar?
So to be clear, a three-month extension would allow time to get the building permit issued and the project in motion, correct? Yes, yes, sir. Thank you. Sorry to make it more complicated than needed. You know, it's been, it's been a very long project. We just want to get the details right. Understood, understood.
Any other commissioners, questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Jar.
I move to grant the applicant, Julian Beglin, a three-month extension to the final site plan approval that was previously granted on April 10th, 2019 for site development for a visitor and vehicle receiving center building, associated improvements and site hardening for security purposes for a data center use located at 9,000 Hagerty Road.
Thank you. Is there support?
Sure.
Support from Commissioner Kelly. Discussion on the motion. I would like to have the motion amendment to grant the full year extension. We are still in the middle of a pandemic. We really have no idea what's going to happen in terms of ability to work and ability to deliver products and supply chain. And that is our ordinance and I would feel more comfortable staying with the ordinance.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Jar.
I would support that amendment to one year.
Great, thank you. And I'll ask Commissioner Kelly, support for the change to one year?
Yes.
Thank you. So we have a motion amended to one-year approval on the extension and we'll have a roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Medina Atkinson.
Yes.
Sherry Budd.
Yes.
Brian Cullen.
He's unmute. He needs to come off a mute. That's why we're not getting his vote.
Brian Cullen.
Yes.
Jeff Jar.
Yes.
Joan Fransway.
Yes.
Carol Thompson.
Yes, thank you all. We will move now to item two, which is still Project Sycamore and the amended final site plan approval. The applicant is requesting amended final site plan approval for site development for a visitor and vehicle receiving center building, associated improvements and site hardening for security purposes for a data center use. Again, the address 9,000 Hagerty Road, property located on the northwest corner of Hagerty Road and Tyler Road. So we'll again give the applicant a chance to add anything on the site plan before we hear reviews from the planners and the engineer. Gentlemen?
Through the chair, just a quick statement, I'm just going to show the plans that the applicant has provided tonight. You may have noticed that this is a pretty technically involved project with a very large plan set. So we've gotten some helpful submittals from the applicant that boil this down to some basic rendering and a basic site plan that we can reference for tonight. So let me just pull those up and we can then have the applicant go over the changes of their project and the general scope of their project and anything else they want to add and then we can move on to the next item, which will be staff recommendations. But let me just try to get this up and running. So here's a simplified color rendered site plan. So perhaps Mr. Beglin or?
Yes, I'm online and I'd be happy to just go through that with you all. In essence, what was approved last time has not changed a great deal. The reasons for the changes, I think Sal Patrico from JPMC had, you know, reviewed that with you. Essentially, what we did is went through a VE, which is a value engineering process. So we tried to adjust the site to make it more efficient by utilizing some existing parking that's on the screen. It's to the left of your screen, the large gray parking area and those existing access roads, those are all there today. We're just effectively reconfiguring access to that point coming through the VVRC, which is the vehicle and visitor receiving center, which is the small building that's at the bottom of the page. And then we've reduced slightly the visitor parking that's immediately to the right of that building, provided just a little less parking than we had before, but based on the calculations that we use for office space within the building, we're still providing more than the required parking. So this is, when this site is fully secured and operating really primarily as a data center and not as any other function, the average daily employment, you know, the employees is going to be 50 or less. And so you can see there's really not a great deal of need for massive amount of parking. So we're actually providing a lot more than that to accommodate visitors and vendors and technical folks that would be coming in to do maintenance and such like. With respect to the site in general, the image you have up on the screen sort of shows you all the areas that we're going to touch. So everything that's in color is effectively going to be disturbed or touched during the The bright red line that goes around the perimeter of the site is the new eight-foot-high anti-climb fence. The red fence represents a K-12 rated fence. That's a zero penetration fence for a vehicle that is 50,000 pounds traveling at 50 miles an hour. So that represents some security. And then the blue is a non-rated fence, again, eight-foot-high anti-climb. It's in effect a Sally Port to get people processed through that VVRC. And then on the right there, you'll see there's a sort of a box. One side is red, one side is blue. That is again a Sally Port to leave the site in order to prevent tailgating of someone that's not supposed to be in there. The darker red that's adjacent to the VVRC building that goes along the parallel with the access driveway and all the way to the top and right of your screen, which is the west and northernly property lines, are some wall structures, gravity wall structures that effectively provide some security and that blast hardening that Mr. Patrico was talking about at the beginning. Briefly, just touch on stormwater with the, with the site. We're utilizing existing stormwater facilities. There's three facilities on site. There's two four bays all the way to the left of your screen. Now, there's basically two smaller basins that do the quality component of storage and then the large basin in the middle left of your screen that captures the water and holds it and then it is pumped from there at a lower rate back into the system once the storm event has finished. So really, we're not increasing stormwater collection, we're actually decreasing by approximately one acre of impervious area. So we've actually got a reduced condition. Those plans are currently with Wayne County Department of Public Services. We are having some trouble getting contact with that group. They're very low-staffed at the moment because of COVID and so we're working through that. And as I requested, we would be asking for a conditional approval conditioned on receiving the permit from that office. But with that, I'll yield back and be, you know, open for any questions.
Thank you so much, Mr. Beglin. Appreciate you walking us through the amended site plan. Now we'll go to Ms. Krishnan and McKenna's recommendation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The applicants have done a pretty good job of summarizing the project and the scope of what we are doing. I will just go over my letter in brief and in detail only the sections where they are changing the project since it was previously approved. So you know exactly what this amended site plan approval before you tonight is. With regard to zoning and use, it remains consistent. Site is zoned M1 and the proposed plan is for a data center, which is a principal permitted use in the district. That remains unchanged, as does the site boundaries. With regards to the setbacks and dimensional requirements, the VVRC building is compliant as it was before. One of the big changes in the amended site plan is the access to the site. While the access of Tyler and Hagerty Road are not changing, if you look at my review letter, previously the parking that was proposed on the north side of the VVRC building had three rows and there was an angled dock that curved on the east side parallel to Hagerty Road to join the loop up in front. The applicant changed the pattern slightly to reduce the amount of parking that is on the north side of the VVRC, such that it is only one row of parking on either side of a main aisle. And the angle that was there on the northeast corner of the VVRC building has also been taken off to include a bunch of parking spaces, which would likely be for the VVRC employees, the employees who work in that particular building. That is a minor change. It does not affect the layout of the site as is. There is no change proposed in sidewalks at this time, although previously there was a parking lot shown on the north, to the west of the parking lot in front of the VVRC building. That parking area has been eliminated and instead of that, the light gray parking lot that you see on the plans on the screen, that is the new parking lot that's been built and the applicant is providing a sidewalk and a crosswalk connection to the main loop entrance in front of the building. All of the parking spaces that are shown on this plan do meet the dimensional requirements of the zoning ordinance. If you look at the plan, there are also sidewalk connections proposed all the way from the VVRC building on the north side of the new parking area, going all the way to the front entrance of the building. So pedestrian access is also laid out well on this proposed amended site plan. One of the things with this project was based on the ordinance standards for a data center, the site would require a total of 252 parking spaces. The plan that was previously approved by the Planning Commission had 139 spaces. At the time, the Planning Commission had granted a deviation to keep a reduced number of spaces because the applicant had demonstrated to you that the maximum number of employees on the site at any point of time would not exceed 58. At this point of time, there is an additional loss of nine spaces, so the number of spaces on the site is 130. And the applicant's redone parking calculations show that they anticipate no more than 54 employees at any point of time. Mr. Beglin just mentioned that 50 employees will be the maximum at this data center when it is fully operation. So the proposed 130 spaces would still, according to the applicant, be a surplus of 76 parking spaces. The applicant is requesting the Planning Commission to approve this deviation from the ordinance. I would correct the applicant, the applicant previously stated this as a variance. This is not a variance. Variance goes before the Board of Zoning Appeals. Uh, I would correct the applicant. The applicant previously stated this as a variance. This is not a variance. Variance goes before the vote of zoning appeals. This is a deviation which is within the powers of the planning commission to grant. So applicant is requesting that you grant that deviation. The number of barrier free access spaces provided on the site does comply. One of the big questions with regard to this project is landscaping along the street frontages. The ordinance has specific standards for landscaping along the site's Hagerty and Tyler Road frontages. Now, the applicant previously, when they got site plan approval presented before you, that this is a highly secure site. And providing the number of trees required by the ordinance would actually be a security issue because the trees would create a dense tower for somebody to hide within. So the applicant sought to not put the required amount of landscaping along the site's Tyler Road frontage. The planning commission previously granted final site plan approval with the condition that the applicant should find somewhere else on the site to put the trees. And there was also a discussion that if there is not enough room on the site to accommodate these trees, because applicant is doing significant landscaping along the north and west lines, that the ordinance allows for the tree shortfall to be paid into the township tree fund. At this point of time, the applicant is continuing to maintain the stance that the required trees cannot be provided along Tyler Road frontage for security reasons, which we understand and acknowledge. But the applicant is also seeking to deviate from not having to pay into the township's tree fund or the shortfall. This is not a waiver that has been granted to any project in, in my knowledge that the planning commission has reviewed. Typically, if there is a tree shortfall along the frontage, the planning commission has required it to be put elsewhere on the site. And if there is no room on the site, you are required to put it into the tree fund. A complete waiver from the landscape standard has never been recommended before or granted by the planning commission, to my knowledge. The rest of the parking requirements, the rest of the landscaping requirements with regard to the parking lot and the green belts, the site is compliant with. With regard to tree removal permit, the applicant, uh, showed how many trees were to be removed. This plan is proposing the removal of one additional tree, and that is in front of the building where you see that small loop. In order to provide the barrier free access route, the applicant has to take down a tree. We completely understand that the tree needs to be removed in order to provide the access path. But the ordinance also says, when you're removing a tree, you need to provide a replacement. And once again, if a replacement cannot be provided, the applicant will have to pay into the tree fund. The applicant is seeking a waiver to not have to pay into the tree fund, and we don't believe that this is a waiver that has got sufficient justification to be granted at this time. The applicant did state that stormwater detention, they're seeking approval from Wayne County, and I defer that comment to the township's engineer. The lighting plan for the project remains the same. In addition to the security fencing and the blast walls, the applicant also has light poles along the entire perimeter of the site and within the parking lot. So the site is adequately illuminated. One of the other changes the applicant is proposing on the site is actual architectural material for the blast wall that is shown on the west side of the VVRC building. Um, it is a kind of split face block type of material, which the applicant called ready rock. Um, the applicant said the material is way too heavy to bring and actually even show it to you on a televised meeting. So I'll defer to the applicant to possibly give you a better explanation of what that material is going to look like. One of the things I'm not sure if the planning commission recollects, if you look on the plan in front of you, the VVRC building on the southeast corner, there is a little truck shape dimensioned over there. Previously, when this plan was discussed, Director Power, if you could zoom in on the southeast corner of the building where that little truck shape is shown. The planning commission had previously discussed that the truck well might be visible from Hagerty Road and the applicant was planning to give consideration to, um, was planning to give consideration to extending a wall. Yes, that's perfect. So where do you see that little truck dimensioned on the southeast corner of the building? Um, there was a conversation about extending a little retaining wall sort of feature to block the truck dock from direct view of northbound Hagerty Road. I don't know if at this time that wall is proposed, I don't see it on there. Yes, where Director Powers is showing the cursor with on the south side of the truck is where there was supposed to be an, a wall extension. So the dock door would not be visible. I did not see it on any of the plans. I am hoping I didn't miss it if it's there. So an applicant needs to provide clarification in that regard. And finally, with regard to the dumpster on the site, this comment was conditioned on the original site plan approval too, and it has not been addressed to date. Uh, the dumpster enclosure is not shown. The plan keeps referring to a dumpster enclosure for the VVRC building. I simply do not see it on any one of the plans. There is a detail of a dumpster sheet in the site plan set. But where exactly is this dumpster enclosure going to be located is unclear at this time because it's, it's not really shown on the plans that are before you on the screen. So the applicant would need to, uh, confirm that and actually show it on a revised set of plans. We do understand that a plan of this magnitude and scope, sometimes changes do take place in the field based upon field conditions or value engineering, as the applicant has stated. We are in support of the proposed changes and we are fine with the planning commission granting the applicant preliminary and final site plan approval together at this time subject to several conditions. One of them would be approval of the reduced parking count for the site, which the planning commission had previously done. Payment into the township tree fund or shortfall in frontage landscaping and the missing tree replacement. Clarification on where exactly the dumpster is going to be located for the VVRC building. Clarification regarding the screen wall extension on the southeast corner of the VVRC building. And finally township engineer and Wayne County approval. So subject to these conditions, we have no problem with the applicant actually proceeding forward with preliminary and site, final site plan approval. I would be happy to answer any questions now or till after township engineer's review.
Great. Thanks so much, Ms. Krishnan. Good job. I think we'll go directly to Fishbeck's recommendation and then we'll take questions and have discussion. Mr. Kammer?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, yeah, as Ms. Krishnan, uh, mentioned, um, and even more so with engineering, um, site plan changes were very minimal, uh, for engineering purposes and utilities. Even though the parking lot, uh, configuration changed, uh, the utility configuration remained the same for stormwater, uh, the water main and for the sanitary sewer connection. Um, I'll give a brief overview of what we reviewed and, uh, what our recommendations are. So to give a, a little bit of a background, um, as we said, the original plans approved in April of 2019, um, were approved uh, with a final issued for construction plan set on June 21st, 2019. This was before, um, they were looking to go to construction. But obviously upon the value engineering, things have changed. And to go through some of those minor changes or, or through the, the utilities themselves, uh, just so to give you guys a, a rec, a reminder of what they are, uh, installing. The water main service is coming off the existing water main loop that's onsite that's closer to the main building. Um, it will extend from that main building area to the east and will service a onsite fire hydrant as well as the building service, uh, VVRC building, uh, water main service. With this, there are no ma- major changes and no comments from the engineer other than we would like to see the plans show how the applicant and the contractor are uh, planning on tying into the water main, um, just so that it gives the township, uh, DPW a better idea of what shut offs need to happen when they connect or go to connect to this main. Uh, the sanitary sewer service for the VVRC, um, is going from the VVRC and headed south with a six inch service line. This ties into the existing 10 inch sanitary sewer that's on the property already. Um, and we see no major issues with, uh, current configuration or alignment of this sewer. Uh, we did notice that there were, uh, some onsite utilities that I think that they removed, um, that still show up on the profile of that drawing. Um, but that can be handled, uh, post approval. Uh, the main question at hand, as, uh, we've heard from Ms. Krishnan and the applicant is really with the stormwater management and Wayne County's approval of said, uh, plans. Uh, as the applicant mentioned, uh, the main change with the, the, the onsite drainage was that they actually are reducing the amount of pavement by changing out which parking lots there are to remain and which ones they were adding. But the overall site plan actually reduces, uh, the amount of total impervious surface that's going into the onsite stormwater management system. The configuration of the storm sewer, uh, the new storm sewer in the VVRC parking lot is remaining the same. Um, they essentially adjusted the parking lot around those, uh, catch basins and drains. And all of the previous comments that we had for them and our review of those sewers uh, have been taken care of and did not change. So we are good with that. The one item that we do have with the stormwater is that we would like to see the hydraulic grade line, uh, which essentially gives the amount of water, um, within the system, um, needs to be properly shown on their plans. Um, and that is a comment within our letter that can be done, um, post approval. And it's just a, a minor comment, uh, as far as the stormwater implementation goes. The big question or the, the, the Wayne County approval is the big question that's up in the air. Typically, we do wait to hear from Wayne County to make sure that they are, are good with the proposed changes to the site. Uh, I don't foresee any major changes, but we will keep an eye out. And if Wayne County does uh, require some major changes, then we will talk with Director Power, um, about those changes and, and what needs to, to occur. Um, but because the site already has an approved onsite water quality and quantity stormwater management system in the ponds that are already there. We don't see any major thing, major, uh, changes that Wayne County, um, would ask for them to, uh, to implement. Um, so with that, um, I know I didn't really say a whole lot there, but, uh, they, with that, we are recommending, um, preliminary and final site plan approval based on engineering review, uh, of the proposed site. And subject to the comments, uh, listed in our letter dated January 8th, 2021. And, uh, prior to any uh, movement forward or pre-construction meetings, we will require at least a, uh, some confirmation from Wayne County that the proposed improvements are, uh, indeed approved or, or good to go. So we would like to see any of those changes and all of those changes in a final issued for construction plan set uh, prior to any pre-construction meeting happening. So with that, um, that's all that we have and I will turn it back to you. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. And I'll also ask, uh, Director Powers, we have a recommendation from the fire inspector. Um, and I think we're good to go along with, uh, compliance with code. Is that correct? Dan, you're muted. We can't hear you.
Rookie mistake. I'm sorry about that. Uh, I will just say that, uh, you, you are correct. There's a much distilled, uh, list of the original recommendations from the fire department. Uh, but I will say that our fire and chief fire inspector Andy Lenahan is on the call tonight. So if you have any questions about fire access, um, or any fire code issues, he's here to answer them. But, uh, his main comment left over is just that the, uh, relating to the two-way radio communication enhancement system, uh, that's required for all new, uh, new and existing buildings that have upgrades.
Great. Thank you so much. Um, I wonder if we can hear from the applicant, uh, in the description of the materials that are being proposed before we go to questions and, and other discussion.
And through the chair, if I could just step in before, uh, the applicant quickly. I, I realize, uh, there is a couple of images I didn't share previously. And let me just, uh, let me just toggle that. Just so everybody knows, if we want to reference these, we can. Uh, there's a image of the vehicle receiving building, more of a rendering, um, and an image of the wall, uh, the wall texture and material, um, that we can look at as well if that, if that question comes up. So those are some other materials that the applicant provided that I haven't put up on the screen, um, yet tonight.
Great. That's helpful. Thank you.
Okay, um, this is Julian Beglin with HF Lens, uh, on behalf of JPMC. Uh, I know and I appreciate that, uh, we had to move fairly quickly in order to get these responses back to the concerns, um, provided by the planners and the engineers. And we did respond to each and every comment. Um, hopefully to, you know, provide some, some clarity as to, to, to questions that were brought up. Um, and I believe once those have been reviewed, they should, uh, I, I think alleviate most of the questions uh, that were brought forward on this plan review. Um, but just to circle back around, uh, the, the, the plan, the site plan does depict, uh, the dumpster enclosure. It's actually over towards the Sally Port, uh, area, um, at the exit. So it is depicted there and it is, uh, demonstrated, uh, for, for architectural purposes on, on the architectural plan. Um, Dan, if you're sharing that, it's, uh, down towards the right bottom right corner there where you, uh, have the, the red and blue just above your cursor. You can zoom in there. We could, uh, just identify that. Just thi- this was actually addressed the first time round. Um, it was in the park, it was actually located in the parking lot. Um, so right there it is, just to the left of the blue line in the corner. Um, in effect, what we had to do is provide adequate space for, um, a truck, there you go. Yeah, it's circled in, uh, in yellow. So
That is the most well hidden dumpster. Sorry about that. I looked at the whole plan so many times, I couldn't see it.
Yep, that's quite a way. And that, that's exactly what we were trying to do. We were trying to put it in an area where it can be accessed by a truck, but, but it's not clearly um, visible from the road. So, uh, we did that and we made it out of that same, um, CMU colored block with a solid, um, you know, treated lumber gate that's detailed on the architectural plans. So that when it's closed, um, it, it does not look like a, you know, there's dumpsters laying around. So I, I, I think we've addressed uh, the concerns of the, of the, you know, the planning commission and, and both the planning and engineering questions with that. Um, with respect to the, uh, site plan approval from, um, Wayne County, I, I, I appreciate that you normally would have that in advance and I believe we did, uh, we did achieve that last time. But they have definitely been affected by, uh, COVID in, in more ways than one. They've had, I think, a reduction in staff. They're working remotely. And so the reviewers that are actually, um, looking at these plans, uh, I think are overloaded. So we would ask for your, um, patience in getting, letting us get that worked out with, um, with that group. And, and, you know, try and get the approval from you with a condition that we provide that. Um, and we are working, myself and Sal Patrico are working diligently to try and work through the, uh, the process with that, that office. Um, the parking lot that you see that's in light gray and actually all of the light gray roads, the reason they're light gray is because those are existing paved areas. We're basically just reusing them, milling and, and repaving them with a, uh, a two inch layer just to, just to basically renew the, the asphalt surface. And, uh, and then we're reducing and removing a lot of existing And then we're reducing and removing a lot of existing parking areas and returning those to lawn, and that's how we achieve a. A one acre reduction in impervious. Just going through my notes here, I think some of the the questions about the water tap. I believe we have that addressed in in our documents, we also made revisions to the plans to to make sure that the. Parking spaces and the drive aisles were to the current ordinance, which is a nine and a half by twenty foot. Parking space with a twenty-four foot drive aisle, and so those have been addressed. These, this most recent set of plans that were sent does incorporate those changes, so I think the plans that were provided to. The commissioners should be the correct set of plans. Mr. Powers, if you are able to put up the. The VVRC rendering, then we could just talk about. The color scheme and materials that are being used for the building. Thank you, everyone should be able to see a rendering that that was created by Omni Associates, the architect on the project. And some notes there that just identify. The basically the color palette is is as closely matched to the existing main building as possible. So there's a a banded mix of of CMU masonry, which is a khaki color and a carmel color. You see that on the on the left and the the right of the screen. And then accented that with metal coping and metal wall panels. The main entrance is a horizontal wall panel that's in a charcoal gray. That's to sort of key into the to the center of the building that that's the entrance. And then on the right and left above the CMU is a vertical metal wall panel that's in a colonial white. So that sort of ties back into the the CMU color. So this building is is a fairly basic building construction, but it it really has been, you know. Dressed up to 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 make it more appealing, both from the road and also to match the existing structure. Unless anyone has any questions on the building, I'd like to. Talk about the fourteen-foot-high retaining wall that's going to be constructed adjacent to the VVRC. For security reasons, and if if Mr. Powers can put up the cobblestone. Literature, I'll explain what ready rock is, so ready rock is not a small. Architectural or landscape stone, it's it's a it's a massive block, basically a precast concrete block. That uses its weight in order to hold back the earth. And so. The base block, I think it's it's a delegated design, but we, our company's built many of these walls and been very successful in their implementation. The base block can be anywhere from two to three thousand pounds in weight, so. It uses a sort of a peeing system where there's a. A dome on the top of each block and a receiving dome on the underside of the next block. And then they're erected much like a brick, a brick pattern. To to lock them all together and then backfill with with earth on the on the backside at a three-to-one slope. And what that does is effectively. You know, the word gravity is exactly how it works, it's just the weight of the stone is what holds the the earth back, it has a cap on the top. We have a twelve-foot stone maintenance band that goes at the top of the wall so that you don't have to get up close to the top of the wall, and then below that. Is a forty-two-inch-high chain link full protection. The top of which is exactly the same height as the top of the wall, so we are not exceeding. The height of the wall with with that full protection. That's just so that anyone going up there to do maintenance as a way to tie off or. Basically cut the grass and there's there's something there to stop them should, you know, the equipment get away from them or or they're walking and not paying attention. So it's just a safety, you know, extra safety precaution. So the color that we've ended up with is really to keep in in, you know, close. Tied to the existing main building, the new VVRC with that gray cobblestone. It it's sort of a lightened, lightened oak mixture. So basically, it's going to have a textured finish. The cobblestone finish with a color that ties into the building. And that color wraps the entire way around both the face, both sides and and on anywhere that it's it's double-sided, you know, where it's exposed. On both sides, it'll have that pattern and color. So there's a small example there on this this literature. It's not something that we can get samples of. Because it would would require us to bring bring a truck, so. That's a that's a slightly different style right there, but that block on the right at the bottom of the page. That gives you some scale, forty-six inches long, forty-one inches deep, eighteen inches high with those domes. And then that textured finish on the front. Is is how it it looks by appearance, and that's sort of a randomized pattern, so it's not just the same block over and over again. It's about six or eight different ones and and they mix them to try and make the wall look as natural as possible. I think that's all I had with respect to colors and finishes, I'm not sure, Mr. Powers, if you have. The rendering that we did with the landscaping from Hagerty Road that would demonstrate. Some of the screening that we were were achieving with. Both landscaping, there's the eight-foot-high anti-climb fence, an anti-climb fence. Requires the the pickets to be no more than three and a half inches apart, so. The frequency of the pickets is a little more dense in order to get an anti-climb rating. And so the fence itself being that it's a powder-coated black fence with eight feet high. Actually provides a little bit of screening as well, because at an oblique angle. If you've ever driven down a road with a with a fence that's at an oblique angle, you kind of get a screening effect, so there there, thank you for putting that up. So there is a truck back there and that's to demonstrate where the truck would be parked now. I understand that we did away with the wing wall, that was part of that VE process. Because the wing wall design requires a lot of wind load. And and foundations and and it complicates the structure and obviously that that results in a more expensive process, so. These trucks are not going to be parked here, they're not coming and going every hour, these are infrequent. Basically running garbage from the main building out to the receiving center, go through there and out to the dumpster. And then small deliveries where a truck will not go through the VVRC and enter the site, it'll offload to the dock. It'll be checked, it'll be tested, and then it'll be put onto a JPMC truck, the one that you see in the picture there basically. And driven around to the back of the building where there's an existing truck dock and offloaded. So Sal, you're welcome to chime in here, but. There there may be, you know, a couple of trucks a day, there may be, you know, a couple of trucks a week. The frequency is not going to be like a depot or a, you know, typical receiving center, this is a a much lower. Frequency use, and so in combination with the landscaping, the trees, the shrubs. That this doesn't really depict, there's going to be some mounding, about three, sort of three-foot-high burns that that help. Raise up some of that that those plantings, a mixture of deciduous and evergreens. So that there's screening throughout the year and then the fence and, you know, a lack of of truck traffic back there, we we really don't feel it's going to be. You know, offensive to anyone driving up and down the street, I think it's really gonna, it's gonna blend in very, very nicely once everything's naturalized.
Yeah, Julian, I I think you you explained that pretty on point there, the, just to give you an idea, with there only being. Around fifty employees here on a given day max. You can imagine these deliveries that aren't next day or are very urgent, they will. They'll sort of amass in these secure storage in this VVRC and then there'll be a regularly, you know, a regular schedule, you know, to come pick up. Shipments or send shipments out, that kind of thing, and as Julian noted, the the garbage transportation as well from the main building here and out, so. Very infrequent use of that truck and when it's not in use, it would be parked in the back by our larger loading dock on the west side of the building, so. I think that's all I would add to that, Julian.
Yep, that's that pretty much addresses what what I wanted to talk about. You know, we 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 understand that we we have a hard time achieving the the density of tree replacement that's required by the ordinance and that's purely. For for site distance reasons, security reasons, so we appreciate that. We have slightly unique use on this site with a very high level of security. Twenty-five-foot standoff on the inside of the fence that to any any new plantings. Really so that there's nowhere for anyone to hide or or jump fence without being seen. And so, you know, I I quite understand that if there's no leniency on being able to plant them, that the alternative is to. Is to pay into the tree fund, but at this point, what we've shown on the site is about the as densely. Planted as we feel we can achieve without jeopardizing that security requirement. And with that, I yield back to anyone with any questions, I'm sure Sal or or myself, you know, we can answer any of the other questions that come up.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Beglin, thank you both gentlemen, it was really helpful and you certainly were prepared. For any of the questions or concerns that came up in the the review, so now I'll ask anyone in the planning commission. Comments or questions for staff or for the applicant.
Through the chair.
Here, Commissioner Atkinson.
I want to hear what he had to say about the planting of the trees, not from a security standpoint. But more from paying into our tree fund for the replacement of those trees, I'm not sure that I heard. What he actually said about that, I understand the security. On the site that he can't plant any more trees, but I wanted to know what exactly was the objection, if it was continued. With making a payment to the tree fund.
Great, thank you. One of the applicants want to answer if there is an objection to paying into the tree fund or. Just a clarification that you can't put any more trees on the site than you already have and are you willing to pay into the tree fund?
Right, and I think that's that's been the question all along is is we we're not objecting. So much as saying that we feel that the the site is as densely planted as as we we can under the the circumstances. And so I think at this point, we just need to establish. You know, that whatever the count is for the trees that are not being replaced and planted. What that be is in order to build it into the budget to be paid into that tree fund.
Great, thank you, is that clear, Commissioner Atkinson?
Yes, yes, and that's established, I would believe by staff, they would be counting the trees and coming up with a monetary dollar amount.
Correct.
Okay.
Other questions or comments? Other commissioners?
And Chair. In the previously approved site plan, I believe one of the contingents, one of the contingencies we placed on it was that the. With the understanding that the trees along Tyler Road, there wasn't simply enough space around the wall to provide a. A twenty-five-foot tree upper around the wall, that we made a. A contingency on the approval that those Tyler Road trees were to be moved to the Hagerty Road frontage. And I, it was my understanding and my recollection that the applicant agreed to that at the time. Did I did I misunderstand that and what has changed?
I could likely provide some clarification on that. At the last meeting, when the applicant had agreed that if the trees can't be along Tyler Road frontage, they can move some to Hagerty Road frontage. However, their Hagerty Road frontage is well landscaped, adding any more of the Tyler Road trees to this frontage. Will once again raise the same security concerns that they previously had. I also wanted to add a clarification. For the benefit of the applicant too, who stated that with the closely placed fence railings and the landscaping, the site is already well screened. Well, under the ordinance provisions, the M1 district is allowed only a six-foot-tall fence. The planning commission actually allowed the fence to go up to eight feet because the site was highly secure. So granting an increase in the fence site did not mean it's understood additional landscaping is not required for screening. Landscape requirements for the site stand by themselves, the fence requirement from six to eight feet is understood because it is such an important and secure facility. So I believe even if the applicant wanted to, it would defeat their whole purpose to put any more trees along Hagerty Road frontage, which they have done a really good job on their landscape plan there. Paying into the free fund is probably their only option at this point, I'm not sure they want to squeeze and please anywhere else on the site.
Great, thanks, yeah. That's your question, Commissioner Jar?
Uh, yes, that answers my question on the the trees, if there's anyone else has a question about the trees, I yield.
Anyone, you have other questions, Commissioner Jar?
Oh, I always do.
Bring them now.
A question for staff, one of the, one of the. Conditions for previous site plan approval was that there was a legend explaining symbols on the architectural evaluation, elevations, I'm sorry. In your opinion, has that condition been met in the in the amended site plan?
I can, I, maybe I'll defer to the principal planner that I can say something quickly about.
I believe the architectural plans they have submitted at this time is accurate, it reflects all the building materials and color choices, so. And while we are on the topic, the planning commission should also acknowledge. My current review letter recommends the wing wall on the southeast corner and the applicant explained why they cannot have the wing wall because of higher wind loads to be received and. With the minimal truck traffic that dock is going to be used for, I'm fine with the wing wall not being added, so it's there in my review letter, so. If and when you make a recommendation, kindly, I rescind that recommendation to have a wing wall there.
Thank you, I I want to thank the applicant for clarifying the height of the fence on the earthen blast wall that the height of the no-climb fence won't exceed the height of the blast wall. I question again for staff, since this is a final staff approval, site plan approval. Do we need to have sheet C four thousand and one amended to show precisely that those fence heights shall not exceed the height of the wall?
That's a good question, I can take a first crack at that one if you don't mind, so. Sheet C four thousand and one shows various section views of this wall. And the important point is that that they bring up Commissioner Jar is that there was a variance. For the wall to be only fourteen feet high, including any, and actually the variance. Removed a a security fence from being on top of that wall height, so the the height is capped at fourteen feet. So that leaves the question, if there is additional security fencing built on the mound. You know, connected to the structure of the wall. We need to make sure that that fence does not have a top elevation that's higher than the top of the wall, so. I think that's shown conceptually on that sheet C four thousand and one, there's some additional detail that the applicant reminded me was provided on sheet. C six thousand and one, but the point remains that, you know, as part of pre-construction, we'll want to make sure. That we're just all clear and comfortable on those top of fence elevations, so that even if they need the fence. Down slope for for some security measures, that the top of that fence doesn't go over the top of the wall, so we'll double check that as part of. So we'll double check that as part of preconstruction.
Thank you. Last question on the wall. In the, in the previously approved plan, uh did the, did the wall have an, call it an architectural element, a stripe that uh broke up the monotonous color of it to match the building behind? I'm, I'm sorry, I don't, I don't remember.
I do not recall the wall having any architectural details, simply because it was set back so much from Hagerty Road and it was strictly um a safety and structural feature. I do not believe uh it had any detailing on it.
And the wall is planned to be a single block color uh in this current plan, correct? That's a question to the applicant.
Uh, so so the block is, it has a a a slight variant of colors that are along the cobblestone, um, you know, color range. So there's some darker and lighter areas um to provide some relief, but there's there's no defined stripe or anything that carries through. Uh, it's effectively all all one um shade.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. That's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Good questions, Commissioner Jar. Anyone else? Commissioners? Anyone in the audience?
And Madam Chair.
Mr. Kelly.
I just had a real uh quick question for uh Ms. Krishna regarding the the wing wall. I kind of missed a little bit of the explanation. If you could explain it again one more time.
Uh, our original recommendation was on the southeast corner of the building to extend a wall further out so that it would block view of the loading dock in that place. But uh Mr. Beglin explained that extending a wall, a wing wall like that, requires the wall to have significant ability to bear high wind speeds. And that significantly adds to construction cost, especially when a truck is going to be using the dock maybe twice a day at best to quickly offload and leave. So considering the minimal use of the dock, the wing wall is an overfill, so I'm fine with it not being there.
Okay, thank you so much.
Great. All right, anyone else? Commissioners, anyone in the audience? Comments, questions? During none. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Kelly.
I would move to grant the applicant uh HF Lentz Company on behalf of JP Morgan Chase preliminary and final site plan approval for an amended site plan for Project Sycamore located at nine thousand Hagerty Road, based on the analysis and subject to the conditions detailed in the the Kenna Letter dated January twenty first, twenty twenty one, the Fishbeck Letter dated January eighth, twenty twenty one, the Van Buren Fire Department Letter dated December thirty first, twenty twenty, with some specific mentions regarding the reduction of the required parking count as requested. That uh payment will be made into the township prefund for any shortfalls and missing uh replacement trees that are necessary and the removal of the wing wall as discussed on the record tonight.
Excellent. Is there support?
Support that motion.
Commissioner Jar's support. Uh, excellent motion, I have to say. Commissioner Kelly, very well thought out. Um, we'll have a roll call vote, please.
Joan Fransway?
Yes.
Jeff Jar?
Yes.
Brian Cullen?
Yes.
Brian Kelly?
Yes.
Medina Anchison?
Yes.
Sherry Bu?
Yes.
Carol Thompson?
Yes, so the motion carries um and to the applicant, with you all the best and Godspeed. And uh so much for your thoughtful presentations and helping us to understand where you've been and where you're headed. We appreciate it.
And and thank you very much to everyone. Um, we really appreciate the support. I think it's going to be a great project that's uh it's really going to be a an asset to your uh community.
Well, I feel that. Thank you, everybody who's uh helped us get the review done and get to this point. And we are uh looking forward to get this project underway. So, thank you.
And good luck with Wayne County. Okay.
Thank you. We're gonna.
Thank you. All right, right your power. We are to general discussion and updates. Do you have anything to share?
Uh, I do. It's a little unclear what your next agenda will be as a planning commission on the tenth of February, but we do anticipate there'll be a meeting. Um, I will also say that there is an upcoming uh Board of Zoning Appeals meeting. Uh, the BZA meetings were pretty infrequent in twenty nineteen and um, I'm sorry, in twenty twenty, uh and I think in twenty nineteen also. But they were definitely sparse last year. Um, so uh we're just uh getting back into having a an agenda with a couple of applications on the agenda. Uh, and I just want to give the planning commission uh some awareness of those items without going, of course, too far into the details uh outside of that meeting. But um there will be an item involving zoning interpretation uh by usable floor area in senior housing developments. Uh, and there will be an item that is uh an actual variance request uh for the maximum permitted lot coverage by structures on an industrial property at six, seven, three, five Hagerty Road, which is also the Niapco site. So um as as is typical for the planning commission, we'd like to offer you all an opportunity to provide comments. And if you provide comments, we will have those comments summarized uh for the BZA's consideration. Uh, the way we're going to uh make that possible is that I'll send you synopsis of the variance request uh shortly here in the next couple of days, and then I'll ask if you have any feedback. Uh, please just send it along. So I just wanted to give you a preliminary uh alert to that. And that's the only announcement from me.
Okay. Anyone else? Commissioners for general discussion? And anyone in the audience? General discussion item? All right. If there's nothing else, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thanks, Commissioner Atkinson. Support?
I support.
I'll take support. Mr. Bud and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Thank you all. We're adjourned. Good discussion.
Good night.
Questions?
Night.